All right, we are clear and ready. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Good evening. Welcome to the Chaska City Council meeting via Zoom for Monday, February 1st, 2021. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:02. We please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Got a flag? Perfect. Right. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Awesome. Thank you, everyone. Thanks for being here. All right, Nate, will you call roll, please?
Yes, Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Gra.
Here.
Councilmember Hatfield.
Here.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Here.
Mayor Winchell.
Here. All right. Moves us to adopting the agenda or corrections or additions to the agenda, if not, entertain a motion to approve.
So moves.
Motion by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield. Discussion. Hearing none. Councilmember Gra.
Yes.
Councilmember Hatfield.
Yes.
Councilmember Wong.
Aye.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Yes.
And me, I passes five all, moves us into visitor presentation. And tonight we have our newly elected Senator Julia Coleman is joining us tonight. And I think she's just gonna do a little intro for us and just to kind of get acquainted with herself. And so at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am so honored to be requested to come speak and introduce myself and a little bit about what I'm doing at the legislature. I'm about four weeks in and it's a very different environment than what is typically going on at the legislature. Most of our meetings are happening much like yours over Zoom. We do have a couple in-person meetings, but right now the Capitol is still closed off to the public. So I'm making myself available through social media channels. I put my cellphone out there. My emails out there for everybody. And I'm also gonna start kicking off a series of virtual town halls and open office hours. So that we can still have that communication and connection, even though we aren't able to meet in person right now, which is really unfortunate. There's a couple of key things that we're working on at the legislature. I'm on three committees that I think are really important to our district. I got placed on taxes, K through 12 education, as well as transportation. So I'll give you a little bit of an update of what we're doing in all of those. In taxes, we have pretty much drawn a line in the sand saying we're not raising taxes this year. It's been hard enough on businesses and on people as it is. So this is non-negotiable for us. So Taxes Committee is looking kind of boring this year because there's not a lot going on as far as proposed taxes. We're not really having those conversations. But what big conversation that we have been having is regarding PPP and making sure that that is not taxable. As far as income goes, and I know a lot of people are wanting to get an update on that as soon as possible, so that they can file their taxes. So we are working on that. I just spoke to the chat Taxes Chair and they are working with our leadership team to make sure that all three leaders, whether it be the governor in the House or the Senate, that we are getting that done, that we're on the same page. So as soon as we get an update on that, be sure to keep an eye out so that you can inform your constituents if they have tax questions about that. That's a really important one to make sure that we get across the finish line. And education, our big focus is on getting kids back in school as well as dealing with all the upcoming mental health issues that have been going on before the shutdown that have been exacerbated by the shutdown. A couple of ways we're doing that is addressing cyberbullying. I'm carrying a bill to get teachers funding for suicide prevention trainings so they can see the signs in their students before it's too late. And so making sure that we are getting kids back in school and keeping them healthy is of utmost importance to the Education Committee right now. Also important in transportation, you can probably guess the one big bill that I'm pushing for in transportation this year is in regards to 212. I'm really excited that this is actually starting to get some traction this year. I got the Transportation Committee Chair to not only sign on as a co-author, but it's going to be getting a hearing and it sounds really likely to pass through committee. Now, once it goes through there, I'm gonna have to start lobbying a lot of members of our caucus and of our Senate as a whole. And I know Representative Nash and Bo are gonna be carrying this in the House. So hopefully it'll be able to get across the finish line this year. That would be very vital to our community. As a whole, what we're focusing on this year are, as I mentioned before, getting kids back in school, protecting the taxpayers' wallet, and just making sure that we open up businesses in a safe manner as soon as possible. With that, I'm happy to stand for any questions. Otherwise, that's a little bit about what we're working on.
Awesome. So I, first off, congratulations on your victory. I didn't do that in the beginning. So has to be rather interesting. I went from kind of a resident to mayor and that was a big step. And it's gotta be very challenging going from resident to a state senator. So how's that going for you?
You know, I had a pit stop in between. I was on the Chan-Hasten City Council.
Well, that's right.
Absolutely loved that there. And they recently appointed a replacement for that seat. So I had a little bit of a step in between, but it's still a big jump regardless of where you're coming from with that. It's like taking a drink out of a fire hose, but I'm married to a firefighter. So I hope that helps.
Awesome. And another question before I open it up. One of the things that, and we've been talking with our US representatives as well, but but has there been any talk about lost revenue for cities? Like people have community centers and hockey rinks. I mean, that's something that's probably affected us as hard as anything. And I don't know, is there anything out there? Or have you heard anything about that? Or and if there's not, I mean, if there's anything that can be helped to push that along is certainly something that would be very beneficial to the city of Chaska. And I know it'd be beneficial to many cities.
I have heard that brought up in conversation. I have not seen any legislation in regards to that. So that's something that I'll definitely follow up on. I think that it's very important to reach out to your legislative leaders and let them know that's an issue. So definitely follow up with Representative Bo and myself on that. Perhaps in an email and we can connect over that. I'm not sure if that would start at the federal or the state level. I'll be sure to look into that as well. I also know from personal experience on the Chan-Hasten Council, just receiving word that projects that had pretty much the shovels ready to go into the ground that were no longer gonna receive state funding. If that's going to be an issue again this year or not, that's something I've asked our Transportation Committee to look into as well, because I know that's so important to local cities.
Yeah, and we've been working with Representative Phillips quite a bit on that because we meet with him fairly regular and we've been asking a lot about that. But I just, I don't want to just let that one go because that's, like I say, that's pretty important to us. And so any, any opportunity I get the chance to ask anybody, I ask the question and and hopefully it go back. I see Matt's taking notes, so I'm sure we'll be drumming up an email. I mean, I know we've already talked to Representative Bo and Nash doesn't represent us, but we've been working with, like I say, with Representative Bo regarding this as well. So I mean, we've talked to anybody, anybody that's willing to listen to us, we've talked to them. So but just like I say, it's just kind of one of them. Sometimes you don't ask the simple questions, it might not even ever be asked to you. So we just wanna
No, you're a hundred percent right, Mr. Mayor. And this is why I love doing these city visits. This is actually my first one that I'm starting. And then I have several more throughout the month going on. But this is why I love them, because you hear about things that normally might not make it to your office or your inbox. So I appreciate that.
Well, just remember, you're starting with the best city. It'll all go downhill from here. So
I'm a little biased with Chan-Hasten, but pretty, pretty close.
You'll get over it. You'll find out. All right, anyway, rest of council questions for
Just a quick one. So Senator Coleman, thank you very much for also attending the legislative meeting we had for Southwest Transit back in, I guess it was the end of December. Just, I didn't know if you had any questions or anything like that since I know we haven't had a chance to connect since that meeting.
Thank you, Councilman. No questions at this time, other than, you know, we're booking out pretty fast right now. Things are coming up so crazily fast that if you, if there's upcoming meetings, let us know sooner rather than later, so we can get them on our calendar and definitely stay in touch and keep those conversations going.
Yeah, fantastic. And I think, you know, I certainly just want to thank you again for all of your support, especially around transit, because that's now your subcommittee too. Because, you know, that so deeply impacts all of us in, you know, Chaska, Chan-Hasten, and inquiry as a community. So, you know, having your support in that will, you know, mean a lot to us in the future, having autonomy to be able to control our tax dollars means a lot to us.
Absolutely.
Anyone else?
I'll show you something real quick. First of all, thank you for coming tonight to the meeting. Appreciate it. One of the things we just got done in a work session talking about was improvements on Highway 5 and 82nd Street. And the cities of Chan-Hasten, Chaska, Victoria, and Carver County, as well as Mendoc, just got done doing like a concept feasibility study for Highway 5 and 82nd Street. Not sure if you've seen it, but Representative Bo did recently introduce language on the House side for $10 million to support 82nd Street to help with the, the city and county shares, because there's not really development to support that. And the Arboretum is looking at some entrance things off of 82nd Street there. So I'll send you an email too, just to you know, get you the language and sort of show what it's about. But, but that was one we just talked about in our work session that could be a pretty big one for Chan-Hasten, Chaska, and Victoria.
Yes, please do send a follow-up. All of our staff are currently working remotely as well. So it takes a little longer for bills to actually get to our desk. So sometimes we have to follow up a couple of times to make that happen. So we'd definitely love to sign on to that and get that moving as well. Thank you.
So, so Senator, are you familiar when we're talking that 82nd Street corridor? Kind of, oh, you are.
Yes, yes. We talked about that whole area and saw the whole project overview when I was on council.
Yeah, well, I just, like I said, I, and I know, I kind of know where Elise stands on it. She really does. She's kind of like with us with no development there. It's kind of a hard sell for us, but we do know the benefits of it as well. And especially if Highway 5, well, I'm hoping not if anymore, when Highway 5 starts construction, that that'll probably be a big reliever of traffic moving forward. So I just wanted to make sure you understood where it was and that, you know, a good share of it bound, you know, bounds the Arboretum. So there's no tax base there and it kind of comes back to the cities and the counties. So that's a, that's a, that's an interesting corridor. And with direct access, then Channel Chan High School from, from Victoria. So that's a, it's kind of a, it's already away, but that road is very unsafe at this point. It's a narrow gravel road that's had multiple accidents on it because a lot of kids aren't used to driving on gravel roads anymore and realize it. And in winter, well, they're not salted or anything because you can't salt them. And so so we do have our fair share of, of frequent accidents out there and stuff like that. So but I just wanted to make sure you knew exactly where that corridor was we were talking about it. Because if you're and I know you're from around here, but I always forget about the council connections that, but yeah, that's been talked about. We've all kind of talked about it over the last few years. So
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, anyone else have any questions?
I don't have any questions. Just want to thank you for your time and your, your support and representation. You know, I will just say that it is tough to step up and serve in the environment that we currently live in. And I, you know, I encourage all sides to just continue to try to, you know, look at wins for everyone and work together. I think we've, we've come into a situation where we're very diverse and people, you're either right or you're wrong. And usually, you know, my experience shows us that's usually sometimes in the middle, we're both probably wrong or we're both probably right. So yeah, I thank you for your time. It's not an easy time to step into a new role. Obviously COVID complicated that things as well, but appreciate you giving us time today and just encourage you to you know, continue to support all Minnesotans and in particular, the constituents you serve as well. So thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you very much for saying that. And it's definitely a year where bipartisanship is the key word here. We have a Democratic governor, a Republican Senate, and a Democratic House. So anything that's going to pass is going to be a compromise. It's going to be bipartisan. It's going to be an effort on both ends. So it's a great year to jump in and start learning the ropes in that type of environment.
I just had a quick question in regards to the PPP loans. I know you touched on not having to pay tax on them, that you guys are working on that. I'm assuming that's for the first round, but is that for this latest round that's out right now as well?
So that would be the end goal. The current round we're focused on is from the prior year so that everyone can figure out their tax situation. But the goal is to make that across the board because it's not used, you know, as income or as profit. It was really used for the intense that it was for. So that's something that's a top priority for the Taxes Committee.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? So do I hear you, you, did I, is my story straight that you have a couple of little bundles of joy coming?
Yes, we found out shortly before the election that we are expecting twin boys. So I will have three under two at the end of the legislative session. So I will go right from being busy 24/7 to being busy 24/7. So it's, you know, why take a break in between?
Yeah, exactly.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
When will they be joining us?
They are due early June. So the session's supposed to end mid to late May, and I'm hoping that's the case. And that they don't surprise us too early. But if there were ever a year to have them come, it'd be the year when everything's over Zoom anyways. So a blessing for sure.
Well, that's, that's pretty, it's pretty cool to have, but you'd certainly got your hands full with just stepping into the role and then and your other one, what'd you say was two?
He is 15 months old. We like to stay busy around here.
I don't even know what to say to you after that. Just makes me want to take a nap. So
I will, I will commend you. I was just gonna say, I'm gonna commend you for your response. I know you took on that topic, took some heat. And I trust and fully prepare that you will handle everything what you're doing and be fine. It's a lot of work, but you know, as parents, I have an eight and a soon-to-be six-year-old. And somehow we find more hours in 24 hours in a day, I feel like sometimes. But I do appreciate that because, you know, again, that just kind of shows a little bit of the current climate that we're in, that something as silly as, and as normal as that became so heated as a debate. And I thought you handled yourself well with that. So I just appreciate that because not an easy conversation to get pulled into. And I just commend you because I fully trust that you will continue to serve your constituents at your full capability.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. I think nothing prepared me for this role quite like having my son as far as teaching me patience and being able to multitask and work incredibly long hours. So I really appreciate that. I'm excited to have the twins get me even better at this job.
Awesome. All right, last call. Otherwise, I'm not gonna take any more of our time.
Thank you very much and congratulations.
Thank you. I, I hope we can maybe try to do this maybe quarterly or something, just get caught up with it works out. Especially with the Zoom aspect of it, you know, that saves you time as you move forward. We are gonna go back to, going back to a live council at the end of the month here. So we are gonna go, but I'm sure that we're gonna still have Zoom capabilities and things like that. And and, you know, certainly if you have any updates for us, we, you know, and want to reach out and get ahold of us, just please contact staff and we'd be born happy to have you come and join in. I think it's great that we have this ability to interact, like you say, personally like this. Ask some personal questions and, and plus be able to to have this connection. And, you know, we see you on the street, we'll know who you are and everybody kind of the same way. But we'd always have that ability to have those interactions like this. And I think they're important. So if we can continue to do them, you know, periodically as we move forward through the year, I think it'd be a great chance. Plus, it gives us an opportunity to speak directly to you and not to staff. And, and, you know, you kind of hear where we're coming from. So
That would be fantastic. Please stay in touch. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And I will keep an eye out for all of your emails moving forward and hope to hear from you very, and be invited back very soon.
Well, perfect. All right. Well, thank you and keep up the good work and good luck on those two little bundles coming. And maybe, hopefully, we'll see, we'll have an opportunity to talk to you before that happens.
Absolutely. That definitely, they've got a ways to go yet. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for being here. Have a good night. All right, Michael, do we have anybody else on visitor presentation?
Not that I can see. Everyone looks like they're normally here.
All right, then we are, we are gonna get going here. And Item 6 is approved in previous meeting minutes. Again, if there are no corrections or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve as is.
Motion to approve the minutes as is by Councilmember Gra.
Motion by Councilmember Gra.
Second by Hatfield.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield to approve previous meeting minutes discussion. Hearing none, Councilmember Hatfield.
Yes.
Councilmember Wong.
Aye.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Yes.
Councilmember Gra.
Yes.
Mayor Winchell, yes, passes five all. I didn't read my Zoom meeting, Luke. Should I be reading that now, even though I'm out of whack? You're on, you're on mute.
Yes, but it can't hurt to do it. So you might as well do it.
Okay, yeah, I was, wanted to get to Senator Coleman, and I forgot about this. So welcome, everyone. You might notice this meeting's a little different due to COVID-19 pandemic. We are holding our meeting via video teleconference. Because the city council has declared a local emergency for COVID-19 pandemic. State statute allows us to hold our meetings remotely. Even though we aren't meeting in person, we want to make sure you can participate. If you have joined a meeting, you will notice that you are muted. We have a moderator on the call who will unmute those who wish to speak during public comment portions of the meeting. Public comments will be reserved for visitor presentation, public hearings, and special circumstances determined by the council. Once we reach those parts of the agenda, I will ask if there are any public comments. If you wish to speak and have joined a meeting by computer or tablet, please click on Participants on the bottom of your screen and then select Raise Your Hand icon. If you wish to speak and have joined a meeting by phone, press star nine to raise your hand. Once your hand is raised, the moderator will announce your name or phone number and unmute your line. Please remember that public comment is provided at the discretion of the council and is meant to be provided productive discourse on topics related to the city of Chaska. Speakers shall refrain from comment or behavior that is deemed disorderly, derogatory, obscene, indecent, or off-topic. Any person engaging in such speech or action may be muted or removed from the meeting. If you are watching online on Cablecast Channel 15, please be aware of the following. Our council members, city staff, and presenters are participating in the meeting remotely. And there is a delay between the live meeting and online cable broadcast. All council actions will be taken by a roll call vote. Thank you very much. All right, got that done. All right, we are on to Item 7, which is approving consent. Again, if consent items are items that we need to approve, but not necessarily have to have comments on, but any and all are open to anyone that has a question or a comment on them. With that, is there any comments or questions on consent? Hearing nothing, I'd entertain a motion to approve consent.
So moved by Hubbard.
Motion by Councilmember Hubbard.
Second by Wong.
Second by Councilmember Wong to approve consent discussion. Hearing none, Councilmember Wong.
Aye.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilmember Gra.
Aye.
Councilmember Hatfield.
Yes.
And Mayor Winchell, yes, passes five all. All right, we are moving to item number eight, which is action, and that is the Commissioner Appointments. All right. So I gotta get back to my feature. Easier. All right, so we're gonna start with Park Board, and I'm gonna go basing this on our conversation earlier today. So we will be Jason Branch is an incumbent, Dave Downs is the incumbent, will be appointed, and then
Republican Jalen Destin.
Jalen.
Jalen, who's, and then the CNOs were the other one.
Yep. And so Jalen would be the representative that's 16 to 20-year-olds. He will be our youth representative on there. And we have still a couple openings on Park Board. And I believe that we are gonna put out application to be filling some of those spots moving forward. We also have a couple of positions open on Planning Commission that those applications are out right now as well. But right now, we are working on this. So I think if I go now, I have to leave this and go to another thing. I, we have to do these individually by do I have to do just by, what's that?
Just by commission.
Just by commission. Well, is there someone that's willing to make a motion to appoint Branch, Downs, and Destin to the Park Board?
So moved by Hubbard.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Hubbard.
Second by Councilmember Gra.
Second by Councilmember Gra. And again, appointing Jason Branch, Dave Downs, and Jalen Destin to the Park Board. Discussion. Hearing none, Councilmember Hubbard.
Yes.
Councilmember Gra.
Yes.
Councilmember Hatfield.
Yes.
Councilmember Wong.
Aye.
Mayor Winchell, aye, passes five all. Right, next, we're moving on to the Human Rights Commission. So again, through earlier discussions, so moving forward will be incumbent Kaylee, Lisa White, Sarah Carlson, and then new members will be Ader, Castillo, Martin Hubbard, Dante Hughes, and Hannah Sanderson.
And Just as a note on those, I don't know if we I don't know if we should have for Taylor, if, if maybe everything could be taken in a, in a group and maybe allow
I can abstain. That's fine.
Can you abstain? Okay.
I'll abstain.
All right.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see this being anything being contested. I think we, and, and we kind of talked about that, that Councilmember Hubbard's husband is one of the candidates. And we just, I mean, it's I don't think there's really a conflict, but I think it's easier for her to not be part of that. Just moving forward just makes life a little
I just wanna, I just wanna put it on the record that I only, I kind of only found out sort of through the grapevine. So I had no
That he was applying?
Yeah. So I just, I just sort of want to put it out there. And then when I found out about it, I, I did refer to staff just to make sure it was okay.
Had I known that, I would have called you when I found out, but I thought you already do. Oh, well.
Just putting that out there on the record in case inquiry minds really wanted to know how our marriage works. So
Well, we'll just let that go at that. So, all right, so, so with that, then there, so there, we have seven openings, but two of them are alternates. And our alternate choices are Lisa White as alternate one and Dante Hughes as alternate two. Is that sound correct? I see heads are nodding everywhere. So, all right. So with that, I would say again, I'll, if there's no further discussing, discussion, I would entertain a motion, and I'll reread before we make the vote.
So moves?
Motion by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield. And again, we're appointing to Human Rights Commission. Kaylee Higna, Higa, Lisa White, Sarah Carlson, Ader Castillo, Martin Hubbard. Ader Castillo, Martin Hubbard, Dante Hughes, Hannah Sanders, Sanderson. And again, Lisa White would be alternate one, and Dante Hughes would be alternate two. And that would fill up the human rights, or, and do I, do we need to talk about bringing Sienna? I, I kinda forgot about that. That.
Yep, it's like I think we were gonna say we're, as a new appointment.
Yeah, we're actually gonna add a youth position to human rights, and so, so Sienna White would also be added to this group and will be changing, doing some work on the bylaws to add a, add a youth member to the human rights. Did I state that right, guys?
Yeah, and then staff will bring back at a future time changes to the ordinance that are needed to create that position.
Okay, but in the meantime, we're gonna go ahead and just move her forward at this point and, and make all that happen, so we should be all good, so.
Yep.
All right, we had a motion in a second.
So I assume I should have formally amended my motion to include the youth position.
Okay.
So my motion's amended.
Okay, and, and Councilmember Hatfield, you, you're
Yep.
All right. So, all right, any further discussion? All right, Councilmember Hubbard, you can just say you abstain. I'll just go through the roll call. Just so it's clear. All right, Councilmember Gra.
Yes.
Councilmember Hatfield.
Yes.
Councilmember Wong.
Aye.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Abstain.
And Mayor Wouldn't Shuttle, passes four oh with one abstain.
Hey Mayor, just one comment I wanna make about the, those votes now. I think we're done, right? It was just the Park Board and the planning or the human rights, correct?
Yeah, I was just, yeah, we're, yeah, well, I'm gonna talk a little bit more, but yeah, we're fine.
I'm just gonna commend the city. You know, I think I've been on this two years. I've been part of the Park Board process. I do think representation matters, and this is one of the more diverse group of individuals that step forward, and that's, I think, appreciative to the staff, to people talking in the community, to, and for people just ultimately stepping up in a climate where maybe it's not easy to step up and wanna serve with the city, so, and work with the city. So I, I do wanna just point that out because in the two years that I've been here and the previous observations, I'll always have strong candidates I go, but I also think we just is probably one of the most diverse groups of individuals that I've seen, including, I think, a shout out for us adding the youth to the human race, because I think they provide a perspective that's diverse in itself. But I just think that speaks well to the overall city of Chaska, because I think diversity and representation matters, and I appreciate those individuals stepping forth and, and joining these commissions, because as I've stated before, I ultimately sometimes view these commissions as future groups to future council members and, and other leadership opportunities within the city. So I just wanted to take a time to make that observation to the city and, and thank the city and those individuals.
Anyone else? The, I was, oh, go ahead, whoever.
Just a quick question, just wondering who the two openings were created for Planning Commission?
Uh, one of them was caught me off guard here. What's that?
Was there any, first name was Susan, or am I wrong?
Yeah. Susan Cross.
One.
And uh it's
Misty Bowie.
Misty Bowie.
Oh, really?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Hmm. It's our vice chair, so we need to re, so at some, we will need to reappoint a, the vice chair then.
Well, they, they appoint, right?
Well, they appoint, I thought we had to, we had to approve it or something.
They reco, they recommend it to the council and the council.
Okay, yeah, so it's just consent item then.
Yep, those, I thought we just did the chair. I didn't even know we did a vice chair, but
Yep.
Um, yeah, and I, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna say the same thing. I just wanna thank everyone that's, you know, comes forward and applies for these positions. Uh, it's, it's amazing, as I look back over my years here. I mean, sometimes we'll have one opening for a Park Board or Planning Commission, and we'll have, we'll have ten people signed up for it, and, and then the Human Rights Commission, we're looking for people. And now this year, we got an abundance of human rights, and we, we got openings in planning and parks and but I, it just kinda tells you how the, how these commissions shift around and, and priorities of people, but I, I'm pretty confident that once we put it out that we're still short a couple positions and, and members on the commission sometimes start putting things out. We'll get them filled rather quickly, and it won't take long, and, and the good thing is, is like the Planning Commission, we're really full. These are alternates, so they're always good in case somebody has to leave, and I think that would be the same thing with Park and Rec, they might be alternate, so. I mean, the commissions are full, it can operate just fine. But we always wanna keep them up to the, up to where, you know, with our alternates in case someone unfortunately has to leave or something like that, or, you know, if somebody is sick, and especially with all the stuff we got going on in today's world, somebody could be tied up, and then we always have full voting membership on it, so. Uh, so like I said, we, we are already advertising for Planning Commission spots, and we'll be advertising for a couple Park Boards, so anybody listening that has interest or, or anybody at council knows anybody, please share that information that we are looking for folks to be joining these commissions. And again, these are, these are vital commissions that, that are advisory to us and kinda they really do a lot of the heavy lifting for us. You know, we, we see it, and they, they've gone through and vetted a lot of it, and we're, we're, for the most part, taking their recommendations on, that they're meeting all of our city ordinance and guidelines, so. So they're important commissions, so thanks to everyone that reached out, and thanks for everyone that's serving. I greatly appreciate it. So. All right, dude, I, I'm lost now. We did, yeah, we did vote because we had the abstain, so, all right. We are done with action items, correct?
Yep.
All right.
You have one minute to meet your seven forty timeline.
That's 'cause we got started late.
Okay.
Someone have a date or something?
No, it was just earlier in the conversation. We're gonna try to, try to be out of here instead of three and a half to four hours, try to be done in and with an agenda like this, we should. All right, accounts payable, remember that now.
Yeah, I only got two questions. Keep it super short tonight. Um, so, page two, there's a BMO Harris transaction. There's a Pago note for, it looks like Cloverfield something, and just wondering what that was for, 'cause I know that there's a couple of these on this one.
Yeah, that's a Cloverfield Marketplace project. That's one of our affordable housing projects that we make a payment every six months of everything minus annually five hundred dollars per unit for, for tax increment to meet the affordability requirements.
Gotcha. Okay, and then the, the second one here is the last question for I've got is on page four, there's one from Compass Minerals America for road salt. I know it's the last time I saw road salt, it was Cargill, so how do we, is it just kind of random or cheapest, or?
So we go through the state bid, and Compass was the cheapest this year for the state, state bid for regular salt. Uh, Cargill actually was the cheapest and is the supplier for what they call Clear Lane Salt. So the, the regular salt we use until it gets to be seventeen degrees. And then below that, we have to use what's called Clear Lane Salt. It's the blue stuff that works at lower temperatures, and so this, this is our regular salt. The, the Cargill stuff is our, i- is the one that works at lower temperatures.
Gotcha, and so it's probably, this is a different product, basically, yeah. Different product, different price point.
We go through the state bid on both of them.
Okay, gotcha. Sounds good, that's all I got.
Anyone else? Right, motion to pay the bills.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Wong.
Second by Hatfield.
By Councilmember Hatfield to pay the bills, discussion. Hearing none, Nate, get in the action, call roll.
Councilmember Wong.
Aye.
Councilmember Gra.
Aye.
Councilmember Hatfield.
Yes.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Yes.
Mayor Winchell.
Yes. All right, moves us to other business. Who's on top? Councilmember Wong.
Um, I'll keep it quick here. So there's a Stuff the Bus Drive. That's gonna be at Cooper's Foods from ten AM to two PM on Saturday, February sixth.
Quick on that one, it actually got canceled because of temperatures.
It did, oh, okay, so there was not going to be a Stuff the Bus Drive because it got canceled?
Yeah, they didn't figure it's safe to stand outside for four hours in twenty-degree weather.
Yeah, okay, so that's, that's out.
Call it a
So Mike, by that, by, by that information about nothing that's been canceled, just screwed up my forty minutes and meeting done. Just want you to know that.
Always was really, just done a wrench in all of your plans there, Mark, Mr. Mayor. Um, so, let's see, so the, so that one's canceled. The food, there is still gonna be a food distribution at the old Getney Factory at February the eleventh from twelve to one thirty, so if you know anyone who needs food or is willing to volunteer to help with that, you know, it's a great cause and certainly always looking for help. And that's, there'll be February eleventh, that's a Thursday, and also March eleventh is also a Thursday. And then the last thing is just a quick question, which I was really reluctant to ask last week because you were talking about chickens, was, what's going on with the KFC building?
You can't do that, you can't do that in this meeting. That has to be in economic development.
Well, you can. So it, it still has been purchased by a group that, you know, they've tried to look for a reuse of the building, and they're trying to sell it now, but they have not been in contact with us about what their current plans are.
So it's been actually purchased by a new owner then?
Uh, no, it's the same one that's had it now for two, three years.
So they're still just, they're still trying to figure out what they wanna do with it at this point?
Yep.
Gotcha.
Yep.
About something may have changed, but, okay, thanks.
No.
Councilmember Gra.
Uh, just a couple things. I'll mention the Ice Gardens. I know I saw you, Mayor, you there, and I will just say, I was, you know, awesome. My kids really enjoyed it, allowed a nice of course, the weather cooperated with us. Picked the right weekend for that one again versus like next weekend, but yeah, just encourage the community to get out there. I wanna get out there at night when they're lit up. Uh, but I just kinda, I took some pictures, I kinda sat back and thought, you know, even in times of COVID and pandemic, it, it was appreciative of the city found and community members found, and we found ways to kinda still promote community gathering in a safe and COVID-friendly way and outside, and people were following the One Direction and wearing the mask, and so I just kind of appreciated that, and I thought it was pretty cool, and gotta be careful when you start new things in pandemics, because there's gonna be a push to wanna continue those things going forward, so uh, you know, I think it was well received, so I just wanted
There's no way this one can't be done again. If this, if this was successful in a pandemic, this will be really successful when we add ever, other things to it.
Yep, so just a quick question, are these, are those actually gonna be lit at night? Because I didn't see any lights or anything about that.
If, if lights planned, are they?
Right, I think, as far as I'm aware, the SSD had purchased some sort of lights that they were intending to put on to the ice sculptures.
Okay. Yeah, there was, when we went by, um, around noon, there was lights I saw at least on one of them.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I know a couple people had asked me about it, but I, I was there on Sunday, and it was like really, really awesome, and I was amazed at how many people were there, so it was really, really cool. No pun intended.
Yeah, I think I saw, like, they're like hockey puck LED lights is kinda what I saw, kinda sitting by them and, and so. Um, so no, I, again, I thought it was, steal your pun, cool. Um, just, I, I don't wanna, we don't need to go into this at this point, but maybe some information for next meeting, even though that's a couple meetings away, which we'll talk, or a couple weeks away, which we'll talk about. I believe if I'm correct, the opening for the new police officer position has been posted, correct? Is that what is the status or what's the kind of the title?
So understand the way that, so the, the, the new sergeant position is funded for July. The police position that you see now is actually for retirement that we have coming up. Um, so there's sort of two things happening at once here, and so we're going through the process once. You're likely gonna see the sergeant position be a, a, probably a promotion from within for a sergeant, and then you'll see backfill of that officer plus the officer that's retiring.
Okay, is it public who's retiring or not yet?
Um, I don't know.
You don't say it.
Yeah, I won't say, I won't say it, 'cause I don't, I don't know, I don't know if it's official yet.
Okay.
Well, the only reason I bring it up is I just, I, I'd like some as a council, at least personally for me, and maybe it's not a council, but back, you can email me, we could talk offline too. I'm just kinda curious about kind of recruitment strategy and doing things not, you know, do what works, but let's explore other avenues, because you know, we had the conversation with the community about representation again, and, and making sure how we can get a diverse set of candidates, you know, potentially for that too. So I would be curious on kinda hearing if that's a council topic, just to kinda understand about posting and recruiting process. Um, you know, again, I just don't wanna fall in the trap that we, we attack it the same way we've attacked it in the past. Now, it doesn't mean we can't do some of that, but I'm really hoping that we explore other options to, to try to increase that diversity of that posting.
Well, it's, it's been a topic that Ryan and I have talked quite a bit about, and it's, there's actually a different strategy that we're looking at beyond the recruitment. It's how do you get people into the, the strategies that other departments have used have actually started by trying to get people before they're actually police officers. And that you actually go through and you actually go through the process, actually supporting their education for that. That's what we're talking about now. You know, obviously, we're, there's, there's some things we're doing within the recruitment process now, and I can have, you know, Ryan maybe even put together a memo or something on that just to sort of explain how that goes on, but I do think there's some long-term strategies that are, are tied to things that will take longer than just one recruitment cycle, that I think give us a better opportunity to accomplish that goal, but I, I, I can talk with Ryan and put, have a memo put together so that you guys can sort of see sort of the thought process behind it.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and yeah, obviously, no, it's not a, a magic source that magically fixes everything, right, so
I mean, doesn't, part of it is, is that, don't we go to the post board to get candidates, and it's kind of the pool that's there. I mean, I get the part about starting where you can, you can put them through school, but there's gambles there too.
Yeah, that's, that's why I think there's short and long-term strategies here, because, Mayor, you're right. There's only so many candidates that are actually available right now. That's why you almost, if you have a specific goal, you almost need to start before they, before you get them in a position where they're actually going to school. That's why I, I'll talk with Ryan, and I think it'll make some sense for, for him to sort of put down what are the sort of short and long-term strategies that we have to sort of address this, because I think and you're right, Mayor, there's gambles that you take on all these, but I think there are some good strategies that we can use going into the future.
I mean, I, you know, I, I think the part that, you know, I, I get, I get your point, Councilmember Gra, but I, then again, we still wanna take the best candidate, no matter who they are. I mean, that, that's still part of the key of, of that is, no matter what their diversity is, 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 you know, we wanna make sure that whatever the pool is, is that we take the best candidate, and I think that we don't wanna lose focus on that either.
Nope, definitely not, agreed.
I will just, one really quick thing to add to that. One of the things that stood out to me in the chief's interview was prior things he had done or tried to do to develop more diversity in the, the department he came from, so that was, I don't know if Councilmember Hubbard remembers that, but that was kind of a shining moment of things he mentioned, so that gives me a lot of confidence that, that he does have some awareness of, of those tactics, if you, if you'd say that, to increase diversity in the department, so.
Yeah, it, it's something he's been putting a lot of focus to. That, that's, I think he, I think he'd actually appreciate the opportunity to sort of explain so the whole council could sort of hear his rationale behind or his thought.
Do you wanna do a work session regarding it, or?
You know, let's, let's start with a memo and for him to put that together, and then, because we got work sessions lined up for next few times here. Um, and I don't wanna delay it because we're sort of in the middle of that, but what we could do is start with a memo and then go from there to see if we wanna have further discussion.
Yeah. I was just gonna say, in the group that uh, he, I'm in with him and Sheriff Camro, we, we, this discussion topic has been very thoroughly discussed in regards to recruitment, so tactics.
Yeah, as I was gonna say, otherwise, if you As I was gonna say, otherwise, if you wanted, if you wanted him to come speak, you could have him come and visit a presentation. But I don't know, whatever, whatever you think is best, I'm fine.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll sort of talk with him about what might be the best way to get that information out, but. It, but it's worth sharing because it's something that he's given quite a bit of thought to, so.
Right, and like I say, if a memo's the way to go, fine, but if you really want to have the conversation, just do it at visitor presentation. You know, find a night that we don't have hopefully anybody else on and he can take a little extra time if he needs it and, and, uh. And go from there, so.
Yeah, and actually for the twenty second, that might actually work out, cause I don't think we, we don't have a planning commission this month, and so the agenda might actually be pretty light on the twenty second too. So I'll keep that in mind.
Okay, sounds good.
Have one more.
Okay.
Most important one I got. My son, my youngest son turns six on Saturday, so I just wanted to give a official record, uh, of a birthday shout out to my son Noah. Who, um, has demonstrated just understanding and flexibility of, of what a birthday looks like in the Minnesota winter in the middle of the pandemic. So, just, uh, appreciated that and just wanted to officially put that on the record for him.
Was he gonna, did he reach out to the birthday patrol?
Uh, we have not, uh, he, we've, we, we've seen that a lot in our neighborhoods, cause we have a lot of young individuals in our neighborhood. Uh, the plan right now is to do something outside on Saturday, uh, however, the forecast doesn't look great.
Let me know how that works for you.
Yeah, we got, we got tickets already purchased to go, uh, tubing, so, um, Amazon's delivering some warmer face masks and clothes, but, yeah, so.
I think you might, talking to Nate, you might want to talk to, uh, Martin Hubbard about a birthday party in a movie theater.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're kicking around, but yeah, you know, one thing can't stop the other, but yeah, it's.
Well, he'll pull out all the stops for you.
A sweet seeing your daughter's picture on that marquee.
So, that is all I have, just wanted to officially put that in the official record and happy birthday to you, Noah.
All right, so happy birthday. Councilmember Hubbard.
Uh, well, first, happy birthday, Noah, um, uh, I don't really have a whole lot. Uh, I, I guess I was, I wasn't able to attend the, the ice show yesterday, the carving piece of it, but, um. I just wanna, uh, really just put a big thank you just to Parks and Recreation, just. Our city, just what we provide as far as, um, parks, we're Minnesota, it's winter. But it's such a great, uh, they're such a great place to be able to go, I spent most of the day. Petron's Park and the Archery Range, um, just gave me an opportunity for some peace and quiet and, um. Just kind of to be around and I, I did walk around the ice sculptures last night, there, there is no lights on them, like, like you had said, it was just like the little puck lights. A little, little bit of a PSA, um, I saw three kids lick the ice sculptures while I was there. So, uh, I don't know. What'd you say?
You sure that wasn't Nate?
The very first sculpture, no, not Spider-Man, it was the third sculpture, cause it was, it was like Spider-Man, the Hawk, and then there was, it was the. Don't, don't touch the curling rock one, because that one got licked by two kids. And then the Among Us one got licked by another, and, um, yeah. So anyways, um, no, I just, uh, I don't really have a whole lot this week, other than just, um, I'm just very appreciative of, of just like the. Nature and recreation that we have here, just to give people a place to go and be able to kind of be at peace and nature during kind of hard times, so. And that's all I got.
Good. All right, Councilmember Hatfield.
Yep, just two things, I just want to recognize the Downtown Business Alliance's part in putting together the, um, Ice Sculpture Walk. Uh, they have been so thoughtful about trying to give people joy and get people. Out as safely as possible during the pandemic, so they put a lot of thought in, into that, so. Um, thanks to them for their efforts and partnering with the city to do that, and it, you know, is awesome. Uh, and then second thing is just, it's, as February first, it's Black History Month, so, uh, just as we work towards a community that's. You know, better and more inclusive, um, just honoring the contributions of our black community members and, um. And all they do and, and the history, um, continuing to learn the history that, um, maybe we don't know about. About, um, what black people have been through, so spending this month doing some of that, whether it's supporting black-owned businesses or. Um, buying books from black authors, things like that, to really just, again, honor those, um, the contributions that, that, that have been made. Um, and I just wanted to kind of highlight that as we continue in Black History Month, all month, obviously, so, that's all I had.
Thank you. All right, uh, Luke.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor, done a fine job again, as usual.
Mike, anything? Okay, you shook your head, no, Nate?
No, I'm just, uh, trying to talk myself out of walking over the park to lick some ice sculptures after this meeting, so.
Sure you do the rock first. That'll help you make your decision. That's it?
That's all I got.
All right, Matt?
Nothing, just a reminder, not, uh, not until the twenty second do we have our next meeting.
Right, right, I was just gonna, okay, I was gonna lower that a little bit, uh, again, we have, uh, President's Day in the middle of the month, so. We have our meeting today, so now we won't meet again until, I have it up here till February twenty second. Uh, so the fifteenth or will, will not be a meeting, so we meet the twenty second, then we're right back here again, March first. So, uh, two months of back-to-back, uh, meeting, but good thing is, is it generally keeps them fairly short, so. And then also the February twenty second meeting, we will be going back to, uh, the Event Center. Live, is that still a plan?
Yep.
So, we will be going back, uh, hopefully live, barring anything happening in, in the short term. Um, so we will be back in person, um, so no more words, sweatpants to meeting, you guys, now you have to start dressing up back again. I won't say any more than that, um, but I, I just, I want to reach out and say, uh, thanks to staff, I know. Uh, us being remote seems easy, but, you know, I have, uh, Vicky comes and drops off my council packet. Matt comes in the morning or Nate or somebody comes in the morning and picks up the, the sign, uh, the signed paperwork, so. There's a lot that goes into these, it's just not that easy that no one has to go anywhere, there, there is still movement and things happening, so. Uh, appreciate everyone's, uh, efforts that have made this go really pretty smooth and, um. And, but most importantly, that we have always allowed everyone that has will, that needed or wanted to. Uh, speak at a meeting that has not been, uh, missed or, and it's certainly given people opportunities that, you know, that they might not have wanted to come in and per. Person could do it, uh, from the comforts of their home, so, uh, I, I, I probably see, and I, I have no guarantees of this, but. I think that, uh, the Zoom concept will probably be around for a while and, 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 uh, I know that there. Uh, Carver is trying to move forward and asking for legislation about still allowing this if council members are. Um, traveling, they have a cou- couple of council members over there that travel a lot, and that they be able to zoom into meetings and be enabled to be present, so. Uh, more to come on that as we move forward.
Really quickly say on that, I've had conversations with a, a number of city managers who have indicated that their participation. It, like, active participation has dramatically increased, uh, during the COVID pandemic. But not in a negative way, it's been, it's been, uh, uh, you know. I guess my sense of it's always been is, you know, it takes a lot of effort, sometimes to get a babysitter and. All this stuff to come to a meeting and you have to be sometimes pretty upset about what's going on to get to that point where you're gonna go through that process. This really gives people the opportunity to, you know, participate in a meaningful and regular way. Uh, and I, other cities have been seeing the same experience, so I, I would concur that I think this is a good tool that we should be thinking about long-term.
I would concur, the, you know, it's like for people who may have like some, the mobility challenges, you know, like someone who's older, maybe like, you know, got injured or something like that. I mean, it, it really is a huge, um, help for a lot of people, you know, in different situations, so, and so not just, you know, those other ones, but. So I would say, yeah, I completely concur with that.
Luke, did you hear that? He was talking about you and I. Hang on, kids, you know, I tell you what, but, um. All right, I too want to talk about the, um, the, the event that the, at the park yesterday, that, it was pretty awesome. It was unfortunate, the, the buffalo lost its horns pretty early into the event, uh, because I actually, I had lunch, uh, at noon. At, at the Crooked Pint, and I was looking, I was right outside, I was looking right at that, uh, buffalo, and I had the horns on. By the time I went out and got and followed, followed the one way with my mask on, um, the both horns were off, so that's unfortunate, but. Like I said, I, I, I said this before, I said I never, uh, wished for cold weather, but, you know, cold weather, at least keep those. Statutes around, uh, a little bit longer and a lot longer for people to enjoy, so, um, I, I think that was very well done. And Downtown Business Alliance did a great job, uh, I, I thought the one, the one-way travel, people adhered to it, uh. I was pleasantly surprised, even though that it was a masked event, uh, how many people actually wore their mask. And we, there, there, I don't know that I noticed that many that didn't have masks on, so. So I, I think, uh, like somebody mentioned earlier, that it was, uh, uh, an event that we could hold in the, in the winter and yet. Uh, and during a pandemic, and yet, I think we did it and that we don't have to really worry about anything, uh, you know, as far as. Being too crowded or whatever like that, so it was pretty cool, I, I know Matt and I talked about it, we talked about all the different events that were happening. You had, you know, you had people, people walking the trail, looking at the sculptures, you had people lined up, watching the Carver, going at it. You had people ice skating, you had people ice fishing, you had kids building snowmen's, you had snowman, or, uh, snowball fights going on. You, you know, and, and I know none of you, well, some of you were involved in different capacities, but. Uh, when that park was envisioned, that's exactly what it was envisioned for, just exactly an event like what we had yesterday. You know, what, summertime events are easy, it's the wintertime events and, and the Downtown Business Alliance coming up with the idea of. Of having the ice sculptures was, was fantastic, and I, I'm with Matt, I think that this is only going to. Uh, be bigger and better every year, moving forward, um, because if we can do it in a pandemic, we can certainly do it way better when. When hopefully the pandemic has, has ended, so. Um, I, I think that that is, um, I, I, it was a, it was a very neat event and, and I, I was. Pleasantly surprised about how many people showed up for it, and like, again, somebody said, we certainly lucked out with the weather, if it was next weekend, I'm not sure what we would have saw. But I, I still think we would add enough people because it, you know.
The same thing in the summer, it could storm in the summer.
Yeah, I know, I, I mean, I see that, something cooperated, but even if it didn't, I think we still would have had that, so. And I, and I, one thing I've been forgetting to mention for quite a while, I, I see that the sign that I crammed about on Stoughton Avenue in the middle of the sidewalk got removed. So I don't know who did that or how it got there, but, uh, I, I think it was great to see that that's, that, uh, speed limit, no parking sign in the middle of the. Sidewalk has been removed, so, um, thank you for that. Um, last thing, I, I, oh, there's two things yet, there's a new, uh, thing coming out, and I, I think it's a Downtown Business Alliance as well. There's a, a Find the Gnome, no, it's, it's Park and Rec, it's Park and Rec. And that, that there, there's a gnome, they're hiding a gnome in somewhere in a park, and they're giving, the first clue went out today. So if you haven't seen it, um, look for that, so that'll be a new, uh, uh, like I said, I. I love these creative things that are coming up with, cause I'm not creative, so I would never have come up with these things, and so it's kind of neat to see. Uh, new fresh minds, uh, putting all these fancy things together, and, and I talked a lot about Downtown Business Alliance, but I, I know our parking rec. Had a big role in, uh, ice sculptures as well, and I do not want to forget them or fail to mention them, so. And Public Works for getting the park ready with, uh, extra plowing and things like that, so thanks to everyone for that. Lastly, I, I, what I want to touch on. Oh, I guess I am, the clay, the, the clay hole skating, I am amazed, I don't know if you guys are, about the amount of people that have been utilized in that park this year. Uh, the first year we haven't had a warming house and it's been used, uh, to, I, I, I'm. Every, no matter when you go by, there, there's somebody skating there now, so I think that's so cool, it's kind of going back to that old, you know, the old stuff, where people are outside and. You know, granted, we had a, a great January, it wasn't that bitterly cold, but it's, it's great to see that. That utilized in, in the way that it is, and I think that that'll just only continue as we move forward.
Can I say something just really quick, so when I was there last night, it was, it got dark and I was standing on that bridge and I was. Watching the ice skating happen, and we had the lights going out there on the, on the ice sculpture, but they were out on the ice. And it was like a dance floor for the ice skaters out there, and they were just loving it, it was just the sweetest thing to sit and, and watch.
It's so cool coming down forty-one and seeing shadows of people out there skating, so.
We've actually, uh, Marshall and I had some discussions today about this, we're, you know, we brought down like temporary warming houses in the past. We couldn't have warming houses this year because of COVID.
Right.
Um, but we're starting to look at how we can potentially use the concession building for a, a permanent warming house facility. And then also have, uh, ice skate rentals out of there, and then look how we can create a little bit more light, uh, down. On the ice to sort of define certain areas in there and potentially have music and stuff, so, um, so, you know, we. You know, that, what happened this weekend, it wasn't just, it wasn't just Sunday yesterday, it was Saturday too, cause we were down there. There was a lot of people skating and it's, it's really just starting to pick up a lot of momentum and we just want to capture that.
Well, you know, you know, all the amenities are there because you got all the power, you know, by the stage and you can cer- certainly play music and. You know, maybe you have to put a temporary spotlight out there to light up, but I, I think everything is there to really kind of move some of that forward. I've heard a lot about people asking for skate rentals, so I, I don't know what it'd be like in a normal year and if the pandemic has changed that. So many people are doing stuff like that, but I think, I think that it's, um, pretty cool that, as, as we, you know, moving forward on this, so. Last thing I have is, um, the Lions Park, uh, hockey rink, you know, that, that's kind of been the mainstay. That's been one of our main rinks for, for a lot of years, and we all know that one of them was taken away, and, and not taken away, but one of them was removed for the dog park. But the other one is there and we haven't been manning it because the, 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 um. For the same reason we were just talking about, uh, with the warming sheds, we can't have them open and stuff like that, but we have a, one of the. One of, uh, a neighbor that lives close to the Lions Park that has offered to go over there and turn the lights on and off every night. And he just sent an email today saying about how many kids are there now at night, and he'll go over there and how appreciative they are that he. Is, uh, going over there, doing that, and that the city's allowing that, that he thinks that that's pretty cool, but. His name is Chris Goodman, and I think if, if you see Chris or if you know Chris, just to say thanks, that he's offered his own time. Uh, to go and turn the lights on and off, and I don't know if we'll be able to do something at some point, but Chris is actually what, is one of our, uh, rink attendants, so. So he knows the, he knows the drill, but he goes over there and it turns them on, uh, you know, at dusk and, and goes over there at ten o'clock and shuts them off and. And he was pretty excited that the email that he sent to Brian this morning, uh, telling him about how many people are skating there and all excited there, so. So thanks to Chris Goodman for things like that, that's just another one of those little things that, uh, you know, Chaska, we keep talking about best small little town. That's what, that's what happens in small towns, you know, it's things like that, that the, that somebody close by a neighbor volunteers to go over and turn the lights on and off, so. I think that's pretty cool, so I just wanted to give a shout out to, to Chris for doing that, so. Uh, that's all I have for tonight, so anyone else, last call, if not, an entertaining motion.
So moved?
Right, uh, motion by Councilmember Wong.
Second by Hatfield.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield to adjourn, uh, Councilmember Hatfield.
Yes.
Councilmember Wong. Councilmember Hubbard.
Yes.
Councilmember Gra.
Yes.
Mayor Woodshuttle, yes. Mayor Woodshuttle, yes, passes five oh, we'll see you in three weeks. Matt, you coming in the morning eight?
I guess.
You don't have to, I'm just gonna, I'll put them in the dark.
Yeah, I'll be there, all right.
All right, see everybody, have a good week.